I'll call the April fourteenth Iredale State's Board of Education meeting back into order. We've returned from open session. Welcome everyone to the school board meeting today. We got a lot of recognitions, so that's going to be really cool stuff, seeing all the things the students are doing. And that's why we're here, because of success of our students. We're gonna start out with a quick, with a moment of silence, and after a moment of silence, we'll do the pledge of allegiance. So let's do a moment of silence, please. Thank you. We'll now do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So next we have our consent agenda. Dr. LeVar Mazel, if you'll come up to the podium, please. And this is about personnel.
Good evening Chairman Knight, Dr. James, Board of Education. Tonight I come to you for approval for our personnel report that we talked through in closed session.
So any questions in open session that we can ask Dr. LeVar Mazel concerning the personnel list that we get from Dr. Mazel each month?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
And do we explain to the public why we don't talk about certain things in open session, and we do talk about certain things in closed session as far as personnel?
I don't do it every time, but ever so often we do, and it's just, it's illegal, and that's the reason. I mean, if you want to get the, if I want to sum it up in as few words as possible, legal says we can't. And the quickest way, as you know, as you've been told in your training, the quickest way for us to get sued is to talk about personnel outside of closed session or outside in the general public. So that's why we don't. But there are certain questions we can ask, and that's why we have Dr. Mazel come and speak to us. So any questions for Dr. Mazel? Okay, hearing none. Dr. Mazel, thank you.
Thank you.
So under the consent agenda is personnel and administration, so I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make the motion.
There's a motion, Mr. Sloan, to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Hoke. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Six zero. Okay. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. This is from February tenth, twenty twenty five, February third, twenty twenty five. And board members, you should have that in your, we used to do packets. Now we have the electronic packets with our software that we use, so with our assembly software. So looking at those minutes, is there any, does anyone want me to recognize a speak concerning those minutes? Questions, concerns? Any questions, concerns from those? Hearing none? I'll ask for them, and you did have those since about a week or so, when Ms. Kelly sent those out. And so, hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved. We have a motion to approve the minutes on the February tenth, twenty twenty five, and February third, twenty twenty five, Board of Education meeting minutes. I assume council it is okay to approve both at the same time. And so we'll approve both at the same time. So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Hoke. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor of approving the minutes for the February tenth and March third, twenty twenty five, Board of Education meeting minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Six zero. So the consent agenda is approved. I guess I could approve both of those within the consent agenda, but I just decided to do them separately. So now we get to the good part, the recognitions. And we had a slight change on the agenda. So first on the agenda, we're going to be recognition of winter athletic state champions, Mr. Brian Pazley.
Good evening Chairman Knight, members of the board, Dr. James. Tonight I have the pleasure of recognizing some of our spectacular student athletes, where ISS has had a very successful winter sports season that culminated with several state champions, as we see sitting here. I think we actually had three different, four different teams, if you count the relay team, two different individuals. So a very large spring that started in early December, and then just culminated here in mid-March with the Lake Norman basketball team. We will start off with, we have the Lake Norman High School cheerleading team that I believe is here for their third time in a row. Most of the cheerleaders are not here tonight as they were doing tryouts for next season tonight, and are, the seniors have, I was told by Coach Heck, a huge competition, another one coming up this weekend. So Coach Heck was here, Kidger Heck, who is the lead, one of the lead coaches for them, to recognize for them, and will give all these awards to the Lake Norman High School cheerleading team that was the invitational state champions of the varsity large division. She is here. So congratulations to Lake Norman High School cheerleading team, I believe. So also from Lake Norman High School, we have Alyssa Claiborne, who was your North Carolina High School Athletic Association four A state champion in the hundred meter backstroke. I wouldn't even want to go the other way. But so congratulations to Alyssa. We do want a shout out for Alyssa just personally. She will be continuing her education in swimming at the University of Tennessee. So go Vols for Alyssa. Next up, of course, we have Drew Curly from South Iredale High School, where Drew was your North Carolina High School Athletic Association four A wrestling state champion in the hundred and thirteen pound weight class. And of course, with the living legend himself, Coach Mayhew. Oh, I, I'm sick too long. Next up, we have the North Carolina High School Athletic Association three A four by two hundred meter relay state champions and indoor track. They come from State's Full High School. I'm not sure if I saw any of them here, but the team members of that relay team, of course, were Nick Porter, Darrell Scott, Jahad Shur, Taylin Stevenson. That's good. Well, we're expecting them to come back here with an outdoor state championship as well. Congratulations, guys. Good job. And of course, last but not least, we have our most recent finishing up here in mid-March with the North Carolina High School Athletic Association for a women's basketball state champions from Lake Norman High School. If we're going through, we do have certificates in. We have Kaya Bond, Addison Bonacanti. They should be in order. Kaylee Ellis, Raina Menard, Kelsey Ryan, Alexis Sheehan, Samantha Sheehan, Finley Shur, Addison Seriani, Jalen Wilcox, Aleah Williams. Of course, we have their all world manager, Cooper Laquire, assistant coaches Scott Dale, Mark McCollum, Mark Weston, and then of course, head coach, Ms. Mackenzie Graham. It should be in order.
Five state champions. That's, that's really cool. That is very cool. Okay, so next on the agenda, we have recognition of Maggie Becker and Michelle Cassidy from the finance department, Mr. Adam Steele.
That doesn't matter. I don't know. You want to go in either? Okay. This girl's made you look short, Brian. You've been shrinking in your old age? We all are.
All right. Good evening Chairman Knight, fellow board members, Dr. James. I would like to take this time to recognize these five employees that I get to work with on a daily basis. They, they make me look good. They do a great job for Iredale State's Full Schools. But these two, Maggie Becker, the Assistant Finance Officer, Michelle Cassidy, Federal Budget Analyst, completed the North Carolina Association of School Business Officials' Management Academy Director Certification. This certification requires completion of thirty-six courses with an assessment at each, and I know they made a hundred on every assessment. The curriculum consists of courses in accounting, financial management, law, including legal responsibilities, and business office operations. And at this time, I'm going to award them their certificate from NCASBO Directors Academy, and I'll reward it to them. So Michelle, congratulations. And Maggie Becker, congratulations.
And Maggie and Michelle, since you work with Adam, we'll be praying for you. I'm kidding. Next on the agenda, we have recognition of the district chess competition winners. Ms. Kelly Hinson.
Chairman Knight, Dr. James, members of the board. The district chess tournament was held on March twenty seventh. This fast chess round robin style tournament was open to students in grades three through twelve. This is the fifth year that Iredale State's Full Schools has provided virtual chess using chesskids.com. Overall, this school year, we had six hundred and twenty third through twelfth grade students participate in chess. On the actual tournament day, seventy-two secondary and one hundred and three elementary students completed twelve rounds of chess play. The online system assigns points based on wins, losses, or draws. The fast play chess tournament was set up to ten minute matches, giving each player a total of five minutes on their chess clocks to make their moves. I would like to recognize the following students who placed first, second, and third in each of the divisions at the Iredale State's Full Schools District twenty twenty-five Chess Tournament. We'll start with our elementary division. Third place, Huan Ling Wei, Cloverleaf Elementary. Second place, Huan Chen Wei, Cloverleaf Elementary. And first place, Henry Anderson, Woodland Heights Elementary. And because we hold this tournament virtual, I'm also giving them their medals tonight. And yes, these are brothers. So same family. Secondary competition, our third place goes to Sariman Sariam, The Brawley School. Second place, David Vesquez, CCTL Early College. First place, Austin St. Clair, West Aridale High School.
And yeah, Dr. Hinson, you have the next one as well. Recognition of the Math Expo, you want to go and do it? Yeah. Math Expo Competition Winners.
Aridale Statesville Schools hosted our District Math Expo Competition on March 21st at the Unity Center in Statesville. We had 98 total projects compete across five categories. These categories were K through 2nd grade, 3rd through 4th grade, 5th through 6th grade, 7th through 8th grade, and 9th through 12th grade. These students all competed at the school level in order to move forward to district level competition. Tonight, we would like to recognize our top three winners in each of these categories. For kindergarten through 2nd grade, Bronze, Sareja Suresh, A Dog Needs A Collar For Which I Need A Dollar, Cottle Creek Elementary. Silver, Aiden Ganey, Math Around The World, Union Grove Elementary. Gold, Aurora Hicks, Cookie Math, Cool Spring Elementary. These are our K2 winners. Y'all smile for a photo. Our 3rd through 4th grade category, Bronze, goes to Adhaav Pukas, Run A Food Truck, Cottle Creek Elementary. Silver, Corbin Kaiser, Walking With Walt, Cool Spring Elementary. Gold, Mohammed Nihan Yasin, Formula One, Went To Pit, Lakeshore Elementary. 5th through 6th grade. Bronze, Ray Hedrick, Pendulum Project, Troutman Elementary. Silver, Shirinika Chandreskar, and Lakesh Ganesh, Construct With Pythagoras, The Brawley School. And Gold, Ty General, Market Mathematics Stocks In Motion, Lake Norman Elementary. 7th through 8th grade, Silver, Jackson Ward, Full Court Math, North Aridale Middle. Gold, James Shaw, Travel Math, ISS Virtual Academy. I also want to mention that Jackson competed at regional level and won 2nd place at the Regional Math Expo. Congratulations, Jackson. Our final category, grades 9th through 12th, Gold, Sarah Mobin, Pixel Puzzles, Unraveling, Hitting Messages Through Stenography, Lake Norman High School. And Sarah also competed at regionals and received 1st place.
And, yep. And by the way, sten- st- stegan- steganography? I think that's how you say it.
Stenography?
Yeah. That is hiding, hiding information in plain sight in pictures, in this case, in pictures. That was, I was Googling stegan- that.
That word?
Steganography. And it was very interesting. Public-private keys reminds me a whole lot of machine learning image, machine learning stuff. That's, that is direct applications. I mean, that, that girl's good going forward. She's gonna be all right.
Absolutely.
She's gonna be all right. Next, we have recognition of North Carolina Governor's School Recipients.
North Carolina Governor's School is the oldest statewide summer residential program for academically and/or intellectually gifted high school students in the nation. This program, which is open to rising seniors only, with exceptions made for rising juniors in selected areas of performing and visual arts, is located on two campuses. Governor's School West at Greensboro College, begun in 1963, at Governor's School East at Meredith College in Raleigh, begun in 1978. Application criteria includes grade point average, essay scores, recommendations, evidence of extracurricular activities, leadership roles, and community service. In the areas of the arts, students must also complete an audition. Less than 1% of all North Carolina High School students advanced to statewide consideration. 14 of the 33 students from Aridale Statesville Schools who advanced to the state level of selection were invited to attend the 2025 session of North Carolina Governor's School. At this time, I would like to call those students forward. Isabel Larson, Social Science, Lake Norman High School. Nora Faustino, Natural Science, South Aridale High School. Iana Reed, English, Crossroads. Sheera Rajesh, Natural Science, South Aridale High School. Ken Jenkins, English, Statesville High School. Anuj Nashin, Mathematics, Lake Norman High School. Christopher Ramirez Hernandez, Social Science, CCTL Early College. Reese Wilson, English, South Aridale High School. Emma Walters, Natural Science, South Aridale High School. Brioni Goforth, Spanish, South Aridale High School. Myra Siddiqui, Visual Arts, South Aridale High School. Casey Band, Visual Arts, Crossroads. Brooke White, Dance, Lake Norman High School. Abigail Lewis, Instrumental Music, South Aridale High School. Congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Hinson. Next on the agenda, we have recognition of Isabella DeFiore. I hope I said that right. Into the North Carolina Youth Legislative Assembly, Ms. Kelly Cooper. Or Ms.? Mr. Tim Woody.
Good evening, Chairman Knight, members of the board, Dr. James. Thank you for the opportunity to recognize an outstanding young student tonight. We are pleased to announce that Isabella DeFor, a sophomore at North Aridale High School, has been accepted into the North Carolina Youth Legislative Assembly, the YLA. The YLA is a nonpartisan program designed to build student confidence in public speaking while offering hands-on experience in the legislative process. High school students from across the state are selected to participate where they will gain valuable insight into the workings of state, local, and national governments. Participants will have opportunities to engage in debates, voice their opinions on current issues, and vote on matters impacting government in various levels. Please join us in congratulating Isabella on this impressive achievement.
All right. Next, Mr. Woody, you're gonna be up here for a little bit.
Just a minute, yes.
Okay. Recognition, and that's a good thing, that we have so many recognitions, because it's student success is why we're here. Recognition of Lake Norman High School DECA State Competition.
Yes, again, good evening, Chairman Knight, members of the board, Dr. James. Thank you for the opportunity to recognize some outstanding CT students at Lake Norman High School. I would like to invite up Mr. Gavin McFarlane up to call his students for recognition. Let's make sure, are any of the DECA members here from Lake Norman tonight? I'll make sure he gets these. Moving on to the next one, Chairman Knight.
Excuse me, that is, no, I gotta come up for this one because. Recognition of South Aridale High School Samsung Solve For Tomorrow Contest.
Yes.
Yeah, that's really cool.
Yes. Thank you for an opportunity again to recognize some outstanding CT students. At South Aridale High School, I'd like to invite up Mr. Bruce McCartney, CET teacher at South Aridale, to recognize his students.
All right. Good evening, Chairman, Board Members, and Mr. Jeff James, sorry. I left my glasses back there. Yeah, the Samsung Solve For Tomorrow is a STEM-based contest created to foster problem-solving skills while promoting the positive impact young minds can have on our society. The Samsung Solve For Tomorrow is among the most awarded national STEM competition program in the United States. The Education-Based Citizenship Initiative empowers students in grades 6 to 12 to leverage the power of STEM to create innovative solutions addressing critical issues in their local communities. The team from South Aridale High School comprising of two outstanding members, Mohammed Fawaz and Maxwell Grace, won the regional competition as well as the state competition. They will then, they went, they went on to compete at the national level but did not place in the top 10. So the winning project called AIi was, uses both artificial intelligence as well as machine learning to help visually impaired people know which items are around them by scanning, identifying, and communicating those items to the user. Mohammed and Max have so far won $12,000 with the Samsung products for, for their tech engineering classroom. So we wish them luck in their futures as well.
Okay. Next on the agenda, recognition of Skills USA at CATS. Now, Skills USA is a huge competition, and we tend to do well.
Yes, we're in the busy season, Dr. Knight. Thank you.
Yes, we are.
Here tonight to invite up Mr. Justin Bennett to recognize several of the automotive collision repair students from CATS to come up. And then we also have a last-minute additions to who won, who just competed in state last week, and a couple national qualifiers that they'll tell you about in just a minute.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Do we have the ones for the NASCAR Top Tech Challenge? So first, I want to start with, on February 22nd, we took a trip down to NASCAR Tech or Universal Technical Institute in Mooresville and completed a Top Tech Challenge. I had multiple teams go. I had a team as a themed event. I had a team go and actually take 2nd place in the competition and won $15,000 combined worth of scholarship. Could I get Wyatt Corey to come forward? And I don't believe Carson Roberts is, Roberts here? So Wyatt Corey went and competed, and it's kind of a little bit different competition. They go around from station to station, from diagnostic to electrical, so they got to have a wide range of knowledge of the automobile. And also NASCAR, which they don't get trained on, so they... And also NASCAR, which they don't get trained on, so they've got to be able to do some critical thinking while they're there, kind of on the spot. So, congratulations Corey, and we'll get your certificate. You might as well not go too far. So that was on a Saturday, then the following Monday, so we come back from that and we load up a bus on the 24th and go to Wilkes-Barre and Wilkes Community College and compete in the Regional Skills Contest. In that contest, we had a lot of students place. First off, I want to recognize Wyatt Donahue. So Wyatt Donahue competed in the Collision Damage Appraisal Contest, where they actually have wrecked cars there on scene for them to actually write an estimate on. And this student also, I'm gonna call him out on something else, he is now working at Flow Toyota through a co-op program through us, is actually in the job field. He actually come in the other day, was really excited, he's got his own office now with not one but two monitors, is the way he's saying it. So, so he's out in the field that he wished to be in, so congratulations on that. But he did take first place at Regionals for the Collision Damage Appraisal. Do I have Raleigh Lambert or Vink? Okay, so next, I want to recognize Jackson Redmond, stay here, we'll get a picture. So Jackson Redmond also went to the Collision Repair Technology Contest, so he actually competed in a contest where they had to make repairs to, I can't remember, Bowman, you might have to help me, in the regional, they had to repair dents, they still had some welding to do, so a lot of all the different steps to repairing body panels, they had to complete there. So Mr. Redmond took first place in the Collision Damage Technology at the Regionals. Congratulations. Jonathan Benson would come down. So Jonathan Benson went and competed in the Collision Repair Technology Contest as well, so he competed in the same as Redmond in fixing his body panels and getting them prepped for paint. So Jonathan took third place in Collision Repair Technology at the Regional Skills. Congratulations. All right, Corey, I told you not to go far, so you can come back up now. One other thing I'm gonna point out about Wyatt Corey here, he has actually participated in the Automotive Collision and Heavy Equipment Programs at Autotech, so he is working on being well-rounded. So he actually went to the Skills Regional and competed in the Diesel Equipment Technology Contest. So I'm not 100% sure what all they did in that contest, but they had a lot of big stuff they were working on, I was on another site, but I know they had stations set up as well, so they had electrical stations and some measuring stations that they had to compete in. And Mr. Corey also took first place in the Diesel Equipment Technology at Skills. We have that one somewhere. I'm just going to mention also, at Regionals, we had Carson Roberts that took first place in Automotive and the Maintenance and Light Repair. And Jack Denny, did Denny make it? Okay, he's not in his blue Autotech shirt, didn't recognize him. So Jack Denny went and competed in the Maintenance and Light Repair, which we refer to as MLR, and that is the Automotive Contest, again, where they go around from station to station making different engine measurements, maybe measurements in the transmission, so a little bit outside of what the normal auto repair would be. So I think there was a total of about 14 stations they had to rotate through that day, and Jack took second place at the Regional Contest for that, so congratulations. Jordan King. Jordan King went to the Regionals and competed in the Automotive MLR, the Maintenance and Light Repair, worked in the same stations that Denny worked in, and Jordan took third place in the MLR Contest at Regionals. Congratulations. All right, Nicholas Fox. Nicholas Fox went and competed in the Motorcycle Service Technology Contest at the Regional Skills Competition, so they had several stations set up where they had to have different knowledge, and a lot of theirs was measuring an electrical on the Motorcycle Service Technology Contest, and Nicholas took first place in Motorcycle Service Technology at Regionals. Congratulations. Do we have Murdock? That's all we have present? No, we've got one more, that's here. Get Lowry. So Emerson went to the Regional Contest and competed in the, or competed in the Automotive Refinishing Technology, so this is one where they actually have to prep panels for paint, and paint panels there on site, so part of their contest is actually in a paint booth spraying. So Emerson took first place in the Automotive Refinishing Technology at the Regional Skills. Congratulations. I believe that's all we have here for the Regional Contest tonight. So we also, after Regionals, last week, we went and competed in the State Contest for Skills USA. And I will, if, when I call you, so they remember who you are, if you'll take one step forward. See, Vink's not here. So Wyatt Donahue, if you will step forward. So Wyatt Donahue went and competed in the Damage Appraisal at the States and took first place, so. He will be taking a journey to the National Contest in June. Emerson Lowry, she went and competed in the Automotive Refinishing at the State Contest, and she took second place overall. And these are really large competitions to... Go off on a side note, there were, I heard today, over 4,000 competitors at this contest, so when you look at that, these are the top of the state right here. Good job to everybody. Also, Jackson Redmond, if you'll step forward, he went and competed in the Collision Repair Technology Contest, and Jackson took first place in that contest, so he'll be joining us at Nationals as well. Nicholas? So Nicholas went and competed in the Motorcycle Service Technology Contest at the States, and Nicholas took second place in the Motorcycle Service Technology Competition. And Wyatt Corey? So Wyatt Corey went and competed in that Diesel Technology Contest at States and took first place, so he will also be joining us at the Nationals. Congratulations to all of you, I'm very proud, very proud.
Mr. Woody, I assume the rest of Skills, we're not gonna be, yeah, okay. Okay. Yeah, okay, so the other Skills, we're just, we'll talk about later, I guess.
Yeah, we added them in just now.
Okay.
Those last ones we handed out.
Okay.
Were the state winners and the ones headed to Nationals.
Gotcha.
They'll compete in the third week in June.
Where's Nationals at, by the way?
Atlanta, Georgia.
I'm so happy for them.
Yep.
That's, that's just, I'm just, I'm just happy, that's just so cool.
We're in May, but we have a lot more coming for national competition at Skills. Wasn't just CATS, we have some other ones out there, so it's interesting. It'll be good, we're excited.
So next, we have recognition of the FFA at Lake Norman High School.
Yes. Good evening Chairman Knight, members of the board, Dr. James. Thank you again for the opportunity to recognize some of our outstanding CT students at Lake Norman High School. I'd like to invite Mr. Austin Rasch up to recognize his students in two different categories tonight.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. James. Thank y'all for allowing us the opportunity to recognize some of the greatness that we have here in Arden County. When I come to you today, I've got two outstanding students with two outstanding competitions that they both had the opportunity to compete in. Actually, all four of the young men that competed on both of, competed on both of these teams. One of them was the North Carolina Gator Wars Competition, and in the Western Regional Area, it is put on by James River, John Deere, and Salisbury, where our students got the opportunity to go to the shop there at James River where they hosted a contest where students rotated around and they completed various small-engine tasks, various hands-on, real-world application things when it comes to servicing, maintaining, and operating agricultural or landscaping equipment. Real-world opportunities and direct impact is what these students are getting by having these hands-on contests. The second competition is the Northwest Regional Agricultural Mechanics Competition. It was held at CVCC. Students have to do a knowledge portion of the test, a problem-solving portion of the test, and then they also have to complete a welding skill as well as an electrical skill. The two young men that I have with me tonight are Carter Clemmons and Carson Barnhart. At the Gator Wars Competition, they finished second in the Western Region, and will move on to state convention at the end of June in Raleigh. And they finished third in the Ag Mechanics Competition in the Northwest Region, and will also be moving on to the state competition at Raleigh at the same time, so they're gonna have a busy couple of days competing. So if Carter Clemmons and Carson Barnhart will come up. These two young men are actually some of my right-hand guys in the welding shop or in the carpentry shop, and the, one of the, over the past couple of weeks, we got recognition that we won a grant through the North Carolina FFA where we're gonna be redoing our carpentry shop, and these two young men are gonna, are gonna help me set up the shop after we spend that $58,000 that we brought back to Arden County. And they're getting prepared, they're gonna leave here, and they're gonna go help us set up for the Wake Up to Ag Day event that we're putting on here in the county, and I sent an email out to everybody, and I encourage you to come out and just see some of the greatness that we have going on in here all across Arden County, so thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Woody, and look forward to the May when we...
It's gonna be exciting.
Got some more then, good. Last on our recognitions is recognition of school board members for school board training, and that's Dr. Jeff James.
Thank you, Dr. Knight. So it's my pleasure and honor tonight to recognize two members that I would say tried to faithfully attend all the training possible, and that's Anita Kern and Mr. Kupanik, Mike Kupanik. So if Ms. Kern, you'll meet me down here, we'll give you yours, Mike, I can, if you don't want to walk down, okay, I'll meet you down front, thank you.
All right, so thank y'all for the training. School Spotlight this week is Union, this month, I should say, is Union Grove Elementary, so. And we have a, four members, you do have a presentation, if you want, look at it on your computer, or you can see it on the screens.
All right, good evening Chairman Knight, Dr. James, and members of the board. I'm Keely Ward, Principal at Union Grove Elementary School, and Mr. Ribic told me I had at least 30 minutes to speak, so I'm just...
I'm sorry.
But I am honored to be here and excited to get a chance to brag about the school where I have served. This is my fifth year serving at Union Grove Elementary. It is my 24th year serving in Arden Statesville Schools. I have served as a teacher, as a literacy coach, as an instructional facilitator, an IB coordinator, and an administrator for approximately 10 years now. So I'm very honored to work in this district. There we go. All right, and what I want to share, first of all, is this is some trend data from the past four years, and we are waiting on EOGs coming up in May to get our fifth year of trend data. So prior to COVID, students at Union Grove Elementary were performing proficiency-wise in, at 33% in reading and at 35% in math, and that was pre-COVID. So you can see, the year that COVID hit us, we grew, and we have continued to grow since that date, and that is thanks to the amazing work of the teachers, teacher assistants, and staff at my school, and they are serving with a continuous improvement mindset. We are starting to get in our end-of-year data, so right now, what I have to share is our I-Ready end-of-year data, or part of it. We still have a few more students taking their reading, but at this point, our school growth in I-Ready is already at 122%, meeting annual typical growth or more, and they've surpassed that, that is what that shows, and we are currently working on math testing this week, so I'm very excited and anxious to get our I-Ready data as well as our EOG data this year. And part of that data, just so that you're aware, I know you guys discuss a lot of times about retention. When you have students who are behind, and, you know, we don't have 247 little Jesuses at our school, so there is no perfection, we are constantly striving for continuous improvement, so when we look at our I-Ready data, we focus on stretch growth and pushing kids to not just meet one year of growth, but to go beyond that with the interventions and everything that we put in place. This slide shows some pictures from one of our pep rallies that we have, so a big part, I think, of building student confidence is celebrating their academics, their attendance, the sports that they participate in, the clubs. We have amazing school spirit with our teachers who will get up and compete in obstacle courses to get the kids excited and to pump them up, and in May, we have Surper from the Carolina Panthers coming to... And in May, we have Surper from the Carolina Panthers coming to our campus to get students excited about the EOGs. One of the things that I wanted to share, and Dr. James kind of hit on this, I think, on Friday at the WAME radio, the importance of clubs and focusing on the whole child. And I know Ms. Henson was up here recognizing students for Math Expo, Chess Club, tons of recognitions tonight. And part of fostering the whole child is having clubs and getting them the experience and the exposure beyond the classroom. And that helps grow them. It gives them success traits. It gives them opportunities to explore their interests that go beyond the classroom, and it helps them see where the classroom applies to real life. So we have 11 clubs, and I'm going to share some of those with you. Up on the screen is our Sign Language Club led by Mrs. York and Mrs. Hansel. So over the years, this club has focused on learning the Pledge of Allegiance in Sign Language. All of our clubs do a community service project. This year, they supported the Iredale Partnership for Young Children with doing a diapers and wipes drive. And their main focus in club this year was learning essential signs for conversations. We also have a recycling club, and that is led by Mrs. Troutman and Mrs. Ireland, two of our first-grade teachers. And they have partnered with Jeff Boyd at the Iredale County Solid Waste Services. And they have actually provided resources for our club students to learn and grow. And a lot of our clubs partner with outside agencies and get guest speakers from outside agencies to learn more. We also have the Good News Club, as many of our schools do, and this club is a faith-based club where we have outside faith-based partners, where we serve approximately 60 of our students in kindergarten through fifth grade. I help lead our Beta Club along with Mrs. Templeton, one of my second-grade teachers. And together this school year, our Beta Club students have put in over 200 hours of community service. So these are fourth and fifth graders who maintain good academic standing, good behavior, and have a lot of leadership that they do throughout our building and making decisions on how we spend our capital money. This year, they did a body wash drive, and the picture on the right-hand side is of them out front of an assisted living that's local, Olin Village in northern Iredale County. And they went and played bingo, and the residents were able to win body wash, which was very exciting for them and a really good experience for our students. We also have a Battle of the Books team. And again, this kind of shows where clubs can build and work with the whole child. These students each read 16 books totaling 4,416 pages, and they placed second in the district and were ready when they got back from the district competition because last school year, they placed third, and they're determined they're going to place first. So they're ready to get started, and they have started on the books. And that's led by Mrs. Shinnevey and Mrs. Lawless. Their community service project was raising money to support Western North Carolina residents. This is a picture of our Yearbook Club led by Mrs. Allen. She's also our AIG Coordinator, and Mrs. Nicholson, a third and fourth-grade teacher. And they really, the students learn a lot about photography and quality photography. They learn a lot of collaboration and interpersonal skills throughout the year as they work on a thematic yearbook that they get to choose. We have a Girls Wellness Club, and this is a picture from the Lacing Up With The Cure 5K that was hosted in Iredale County at the YMCA. We ran in honor of Nurse Holly, one of our student one-on-one nurses, and our school nurse, Nurse Cheek. This club is ran by a kindergarten teacher, Mrs. Cochrane, and a fifth-grade teacher, Mrs. Yarborough. So you can see the excitement on the pages. And in fact, Nurse Holly, she rode her scooter and made it through the 5K, so we were really proud of her. Our Archery Club goes to state competition. Our school also hosted a regional qualifying tournament with several of the schools, North Middle and Cool Spring. It is ran by our PE teacher, Mr. Welburn, a third-grade teacher, Mrs. Stroud, and a custodian, Mrs. Deborah. This year, they ranked 11th. We were hoping for top 10, and we missed it just by a tiny little margin, but we're going to go back next year and improve, continuous improvement mindset. So we ranked 11th, and we are still ranking first with the elementary schools that compete in the district. They also, the Archery Club sponsored the Polar Plunge with the Special Olympics, and they also do a fundraiser for the American Heart Association. Our, here's a few students from our Robotics Club. I'll let the teachers choose which pictures were coming up here. So this club is led by Mrs. Hill and Mrs. Fulbright, a second and fourth-grade teacher. These students have been researching careers connected to the ocean, and their problem-solving was to come up with solutions and ideas to make their jobs easier. So in addition to learning how to program a robot to complete missions, they were doing some career research as well. Our newest club is Ivy Smart Girls. So this is a club actually led by one of our teacher assistants, Mrs. Amber. It's a girls-only club focusing on building leadership among our ladies, and it's also service-oriented. They are required to get so many service hours. The picture on the screen, they went across to our seniors during the school day to work with them and collaborate with them and just have some really strong interpersonal. And also, you know, when you're elderly versus younger, I think a lot of times those paths, you don't feel like you can connect, and it really is a strong and good connection for both. So that was a very good experience, and there were a lot of positive stories that the girls were able to share when they came back from that visit across the street at one of our churches. Okay, and our Clogging Club has been a big part. If you know anything about the northern end of the county, you might have heard of Fiddler's Grove. So it's a big bluegrass community. And one of our pillars in our community, Mr. Lunsford, has been vital in helping us get this club kicked off. This past Saturday at our Spring Fest, they brought in an American Idol singer and clogger who visited and clogged with our students during the talent show. So that was, of course, exciting. And by the end of this school year, they will have completed a total of 10 performances. Our NC Pre-K that we host on our campus serves 18 students with a waiting list. And you can see Ms. Charlie on the right and Ms. Jo on the left. And our kindergarten teachers absolutely love having this class on our campus and can tell such a difference with the students already having an understanding of letters and counting and being able to write their name when they come to them, starting in kindergarten. Our vision at Union Grove is to educate, engage, empower, and excite every child every day. So here are just some of the pictures. We have Ag in the Classroom Monthly with Tricia Sloan. Her husband is the Farm Bureau Farmer of the Year. So that has been a great curriculum to add. It aligns with our science curriculum. So she comes each month to do hands-on lessons with our students, again promoting the positive. You see our counselor, Mrs. Myers, as the eyeglasses ferry visiting students and getting, giving them rewards if they are wearing their eyeglasses. Our Math Expo students, we had about 40 participants, and they had the incentive of getting to do a math escape room with a partnership with the Iredale County Public Library in the middle there. The bottom-left picture is some of our Girl Scouts, where our media specialist, Mrs. Shinnevey, wrote a grant to attain getting a storybook walk across the street at a local walking path at a church where the Girl Scouts change out the stories each week, which promotes literacy. Top is our, three of our Beta Club students who attended the Iredale County Special Olympics to help with our class. The final slide is about culture. Union Grove culture is key. Having that growth mindset, having a shared vision. You can see our teachers are excited. We have a red team versus black team competition. We have an outdoor classroom. Grover, our mascot, visits students regularly to recognize good character each month. We enjoy some underground staff dress-up weeks only to keep us going, especially this time of year, which is the hardest time of year if you are an educator. And then we are excited to have our SRO, Deputy Hooks, who helps us anytime, anywhere we need it on campus. And we grow at the Grove. That's our motto. So thank you for letting me share, and I hope you got a little taste of the little golden nugget that's located in northern Iredale County, Union Grove Elementary.
Ms. Ward, do you want to take any questions or anything? If you wish. Board members have any, I thought.
Do you have any questions?
I mean, it's such a, it's just so nice up there.
I've got a comment.
You got a comment? All right, go ahead.
We're already getting crowded in North Iredale. Don't advertise too much. My dad graduated from Union Grove, uh, Union Grove High School at the time. And of course, he went all the way through at Union Grove, played ball with them, and heard all kinds of stories from Union Grove. And of course, I still live in the area, and I'm just, I'm just really proud of what I'm seeing here. Good, good job.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to make any comments? Well, I remember you from Celeste.
That's right.
And you remember my kids from there, and you did a great job there, and just really, really cool to see what you're doing up at, up at Union Grove, which was really nice.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And... And just because we have public comments, things go over, we'll take a little quick five-minute recess, and all members back at 7:15 even. That'll be six minutes. Just a quick, little break. It's 7:15, so we'll get started, and the non-consent agenda is next. Public comments after the non-consent agenda, my bad. Oh, well. So I think everyone's here, so we'll go ahead and get started on the non-consent agenda. And a lot of this, we discussed some details at the committee of the whole meeting last week, so there may not be a lot of in-depth discussion, but we'll go through some of these. And first up is 2025 Alternative School Modified Accountability System options, and that's Ms. Laura Elliott.
Chairman Knight, Dr. James, and school board members. So last week, we went through the memo for the 2526, the accountability options for our alternative school and our discovery school. So I didn't know if you guys had any additional questions.
And this is a voting?
This is a voting, yes.
Okay, so tell us exactly what we're voting for.
So each year, the Department of Public Instruction requires the districts to decide on an option that, whereas our traditional schools, they get the school performance grade. Well, they allow alternative schools and our exceptional children's school to have a different model. And so each year, we have always gone with option B, and that gives them a few more, I guess, meat to their scores that they get. So they get school student persistence. So if a student stays and they finish the year with them, then they get credit for those students staying in school. They're not a dropout. We always like that. So that's 20%. And then they get school achievement, and so that's 20%. But you see that they have all those indicators that count into that 20%. So if you think about our Northview Alternative, they're K-12. The Discovery School, they're K-12. So they really have all those indicators that could play into their school accountability grade. And then they are calculated at 60% with their growth. You know, we are glad that the... You know, we are glad that the state allows us to, you know, they put more emphasis on growth for those two schools than the other indicators. So, you know, they get a, a rating, you know, highest is progressing, then maintaining, and declining. And then on that second page, I show what we have been for the last five years with Northview Academy, where they have been maintaining. And we always like to see that. We, you know, with the students that go there at Northview, those are our at-risk students. You know, so to keep them in school and stay maintaining, I think that is a success.
And the growth aspect being the, the main component of that, a majority component of it, 60% compared to the other two being 40 added together, a growth mindset for those students, just take them in and move them forward as much as you can, and that's, that's, that's a good thing for those students. So, this is a voting item. Do we have a motion to accept using option B for the Alternative Schools Modified Accountability Program?
Make a motion that we accept.
Second.
So, we have a motion by, by Ms. Anita Kern, and a second by Mr. Brian Sloan, that we accept the option B for the Alternative Schools Modified Accountability, for the Modified Accountability System. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we'll go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor of option B for the Alternative Schools Modified Accountability System, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Hearing none, 6-0. Thank you, Ms. Elliott. Okay. Next on the agenda, this is purchase for new welding lab at CATS. Mr. Woody, Tim Woody, and Mr. Mark Shankerick.
Yes, this is a voting item, and we're voting again for permission to spend CTE money to purchase our portion of the three-part welding we discussed last meeting. And I would be, CTE would be the middle section, and Mr. Shankerick and Facilities and Planning would be the second section, or the third section, excuse me.
Okay. Do we have any questions or comments concerning, if anyone want to be recognized to speak to Mr. Woody or Mr. Shankerick concerning the welding lab at CATS, the new welding lab? Mr. Koobinig?
Mr. Woody, just to be clear, like you said, we're, we're voting to approve the CTE portion of the equipment for $164,277, correct?
Correct.
And then the facilities planning portion of the 221,413, correct?
Correct.
And then we do not have to approve, or do we have to approve, the Mitchell Community College?
We do not. That's just a portion we ask them to break out, and with the three parts added together, that completes the purchase.
Right. Okay. Okay, well, good. Thank you very much. Just wanted to clear that.
No, good question.
Clear that up.
Anyone else? Mr. Sloan?
To sum up, we've got multiple bids, and we are getting assistance on paying for the equipment.
Yes, we, that's why we broke it up. And as I said, Mitchell has committed over $750,000 to this project, and that first section, there's a small portion of what they're doing. So, the three departments together with CTE, the district, and Mitchell is coming together to put the central system in, which is the extraction unit for the fumes for the new welding lab.
Anyone else want to be recognized? Ms. Kern?
Oh.
Okay. Anyone else? I have, go ahead, Mr. Shankerick.
I just want to clarify that there, there is a construction cost that will be associated with the project in addition to what is listed here. I wanted to make sure that that was clear, that there is, there's more to come, but we, we don't know that until final DPI approval and permitting and all of those things.
Do you have a, I guess, in-your-head estimate of how much that should be in?
Our total contribution from capital costs, we were trying to stay under $500,000. There is a concern about some electrical pieces with it, but that's kind of unknown at this point.
Okay, thank you.
These three pieces are for equipment only.
Yes, sir. Any other questions?
I've got a follow-up question.
Okay, go, go ahead.
With this amount of money, how many students do you see pursuing, pursuing their career in, in welding and, and that money coming back to Arden County?
Welding is the number one fastest-growing CTE program that we currently offer outside of Ag and some of our health science classes. With the welding, we want to offer 30 students in the morning, 30 students the afternoon, and 30 in the evening in partnership with Mitchell. Not only fall and spring, but hopefully over the summer as well, if we can work it out. The goal is to utilize that as much as we can and keep those welding jobs here in Arden State School, because there are tons of welding positions in the county. And, you know, they get calls all the time from CATS, and they have students working all over the county now that have graduated. So, we see that return on investment coming back to us, I would say, in probably five to eight years, just because of the 90s, so we can use during the school year, and 180 during the school year, and then hopefully another, you know, 60 to 90 in the summer, depending on how we can run the programs.
So, we're seeing job placement is, is being high in the future.
Yeah, that's a huge, if you look in our, the NC jobs report, STAR jobs, that is one of the fastest-growing trade skills in our area, in the region for, for sure.
Anything else? I'll have a, Mr. Woody, would it be fair to say if Mitchell wouldn't be putting in half a million dollars if they didn't think they would be getting students in this as well? Would that be a fair assessment?
Absolutely, Dr. Knight. We have come to the realization in working together that we can do so much more together than we can separate. We know that with budgets the way they are on both public ed and community college side, in order to advance programming for both areas, we have to come and build partnerships that work together, and that is a win-win for all, but most importantly, a win for our students. And we feel that this is doing that by bringing back a CCP program that is college credit, dual enrollment for those students who will be going through welding. But more than that, it solidifies a partnership that we're going to continue to build on, and the future plans are to continue to look at advanced manufacturing and trade skills and, and continue to build that, including HVAC, plumbing, and electrical, to kind of round out the construction core that we have here at CATS already.
Would you, would you say that, would the, would the students be able to get certificates from Mitchell while attending this program at?
They'll be able to earn their hours to a certain point based on the CCP outline we have, and then they can bleed right into Mitchell if they want to continue on to get a certificate or.
So, it helps pipeline them to get Mitchell if they want a college-type degree, but they could also take what they come out of here with the certificates they will have, with the hours they'll have, and they could get directly placed in jobs out of here if they wished.
Absolutely. That's the, that's the seamlessness of the partnership.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? And this is a voting item, correct?
Correct.
Definitely a voting item.
One more quick.
Yes, one more, if, if, if everyone's okay. Okay, go ahead.
Will we be building a pool next?
That is not under CTE's purview, so that's a Mr. Shankerick question.
A welding pool is what I was meaning, underwater welding.
Oh, an underwater welding. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. No, and I don't know. Now, that's a, you know, that is, you say that, and that used to be a joke all the time, but there are, there's a lot of money in underwater welding, and it's a true art and a talent, but that is certainly something to take it under advisement and look at. Matter of fact, we have had offhanded discussions about it, about how to add the program.
Mr. Woody, as a guy that does rockets, I understand a lot about risk mitigation. I think I know where I'm at about underwater welding and risk mitigation, if you know what I mean. We'll let Mitchell take care of that one.
Yes, that's where virtual could come into play.
Yeah, all right. Thank you very much. So, if there's no questions, do I have a motion that we approve the request to spend the money, $164,277 for, out of CTE's part, for the new central system install, and 22, $221,413 from the facilities department for the welding, new welding lab at CATS? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we accept this agenda.
We have a motion to accept, as per discuss, the purchase of a new welding lab at CATS? Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Hope. Is there any discussion?
I just want to give a thanks out to Mitchell Community College for partnering with Arden State School Schools. I think it's going to be a great thing. Looking forward to it.
Yes, we're working hard to make it as solid as we can.
Okay. Any other questions, comments concerning the motion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the, at, per discuss, the purchase for a new welding lab at CATS, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Hearing none, it's vote is 6-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So, next on the agenda, we have the budget amendments by Mr. Adam Steele.
Yes, so I presented the budget amendments at the last meeting, and if I'll take any questions, should you have any?
Does anyone want to be recognized, discuss the budget amendments for Mr. Adam Steele? I had a lot of questions on it last time. Do any others?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Will this be one of the last budget amendments, or do you know when they're coming up?
You will have budget amendments in May and June. You all, we'll have budget amendments all the way up till the end of the year.
May and June, yeah.
Yeah, we always have budget amendments in June, but I will have more in May, and I will have obviously more in June. We have budget amendments all the time.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, anyone we recognized? Hearing none, Mr. Steele, thank you for the discussion on budget amendments. I look forward to seeing you for the next set of budget amendments.
I need your approval.
Oh, you, this has to be approved? I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. This is a voting, this is a voting, okay? Right, because of the money, you have to vote on it. That's right. So, do I have a motion to approve the budget amendments per discussion with Mr. Adam Steele?
Right.
Okay. Mr. Sloan makes a motion that we approve the budget amendments per discussion, per the presentation from Mr. Steele. And we have a second from Mr. Hope.
Second.
And any discussion per the motion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the budget amendments, per the discussion from Mr. Adam Steele, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? There is none, so vote is 6-0. Thank you. All right. Proposed policy readings. Now, these are still first readings. We discussed those. First up is Board Committees by Dr. Jeff James.
So, we talked about this last week, and the policy basically corrects the verbiage that allows the board to set the number of meetings each year. So, this policy actually said that we'd have a Cal meeting each month. The board elected not to do that, so we need to change the policy to make the policy coincide with the wish of the board. And this is first read.
So, we had a discussion on it a little bit last week. Anyone want to be recognized to discuss this with Dr. James, the Policy 2230 Budget Committees changes?
Ms. Chairman?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Ms. Chairman, I went and looked back at the February 10th meeting where the superintendent mentioned he was going to bring forward a change to this policy, and, and we talked about that we had the two committees, the existing committees, the construction and the facilities and planning committees, and those committees have been in existence for many, many, many years. And so, can you help me understand why those two committees are not considered standing committees, and when they've been in existence for more than 10, 15 years, therefore, I was under the understanding that the superintendent was going to revise Policy 2230 to reflect the fact that the facilities and construction committees were going to be designated as standing committees due to their ongoing nature of?
Well, actually, that wasn't what I took away from it, nor the attorney. Actually, Dean Shatley and I drafted this after that meeting, so if we missed something, then at the pleasure of the board, you'd have to decide if there's something that needs to be added.
So, from your perspective, would you say that you thought it was just changing the schedule for the Committee of the Whole, since we're not going to have it at every meeting?
Yes, Dean was here that night, and that was the conversation I remember, but, you know, again, sitting up here, you don't always hear everything. And so, Dean actually worked with Kelly and I to correct it after that meeting. So, if that's not the, what the board wants in a policy, then we need to go back to the attorney to adjust it accordingly.
Ms. Koobinig, you have any other questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
And then the, the second question I have is, all the committees that we, well, now three, is it correct that the schedules for when those meetings take place is supposed to be published, and meeting minutes are supposed to be published? I don't, I don't know. I couldn't find where that is done. So, the meeting schedules are, these meetings are open to the public, if I'm not correct. So, I couldn't find where the meeting dates are scheduled and when meeting minutes are compiled, that they're posted either for public consumption. So, I just wanted to mention that as well, because I think there's an action item there. But the, the, the initial inquiry was, is if we have these construction and facilities committees that have been in existence and continue to be in existence, why, why they're serving as standing committees, not ad hoc committees, it would seem to me.
We can, I think that's outside the purview of this change, but it can be discussed, and we can discuss it.
Well, why wouldn't it be with this is changed? Because we wouldn't be complying with the policy then.
From, as Mr., as Dr. James said, the initial thought, from my understanding as well, that this, this committee change was only for the Committee of the Whole, since we're, to make, the, since we decided not to do Committee of the Whole every month, that we would change the policy to reflect that vote.
Well, I, my, my suggestion is, since new information has come to light, that we pull this back and make the necessary changes to reflect how we're doing business as the board.
Dr. James, do you have a thought on that?
I mean, if the board's pleasure, I mean, I can go back with the attorneys, and, and i-if we're going to have a, a true legislative committee, yes. That is, that will have to be run just like a regular public meeting.
Right.
Would, and then you would have to take notes. And again, as I cautioned the board, I've worked in both, I've worked it both ways, and there's pros and cons to either way. When you have five or six committees, then typically myself, Kelly, or someone from administration is there either to record it, somebody has to take those notes, transcribe them, provide them back to the board. So, yes, Mr. Koobinig would be right, if, if we're calling these true committees, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ashley. But I don't know if the construction facility was ever considered one. I know that you generated a legislative committee.
Yeah.
But I think the board will just have to give me some direction and the, the legal team, and then we'll, you know, make adjustments as necessary.
And this is first reading. I think we can discuss it between now and then.
Absolutely.
Okay. And to see if that's within how we want to go with that, okay? I was not under the impression that the facilities committee was a true, I guess, board committee. It was a committee set up, but terminology can be fluid sometimes, so.
Well, the actual facilities committee was designed with us, Mitchell, Marshall graded after some discussion back during Dr. Holliday's time between the county commissioners, the board, and, and through a mediation, the agreement was there would be a facilities committee. And my understanding from that, some of the, the verbiage is whatever that committee decided that, that we needed to do as a district, then that would be considered, and, and of course, we were always asked to give an order of what the greatest needs are, and we would present that to the county commissioners. I do know that the chair of the facilities committee has asked that we reach out to Marshall and Mitchell, because both of those are beginning to do some construction, so we, I think she would like to bring it back to the whole county, as it was, I think legally, the legal entity was designed to be through mediation. They just weren't building over the last three or four years, so they weren't involved.
I do know when I was on that, we called it a task force.
Yes.
Not a committee.
Facility Task Force.
So, we didn't, so it wouldn't be considered within the purview of this if we consider it still as a task force. Mr. Sloan, would you want to be recognized?
On information?
Yes, sir.
The new committees that was created, are they committees now, or are they?
The legislative committee is the only, from my perspective, the only committee that we have that I see as a, that the board has. And they're, they're going to report on some of the things they've done. They're, they're going to have to have a official meeting here in a little bit to record what goes on, and they've already been, they've already been advised that, you know, they got to put that out ahead of time as public and everything like that. They do know that. But from my perspective, and just getting on here, and I'm learning as I go, as we all are, is that the only committee that I see is a, that would be under the purview of this, as a, would be the legislative.
And it would be open to the public?
Yes, sir, if they, when they have their meetings. Yes, yes.
Chairman Knight?
Go ahead.
I, I was under the impression that the facilities task I was under the impression that the Facilities Task Force and the Facilities Use Committee are two different...
Okay, it's Facilities Use, so there's Facilities Use Committee.
Yes, so, for example, I'm not on the Facilities Task Force, but Rhonda and I are on the Facilities Use Committee.
That may be a committee. I need to look into that more. I didn't, that may be, and y'all do have meetings, and you announce them publicly. So, they be, would be within the policy of having to do that.
Yeah, we're notified by Mr. Schinkert whenever it's time for us to have one.
Facilities Use Committee.
Yes.
Okay. So, we'll look that as, and we'll see if that needs to be a possible, you know, a standing committee or just ad hoc. I'm not sure as of yet.
So, Dr. Knight, the Facilities Use Committee. And of course, there's been some changes as we've changed boards and some other things. But, yes, at, and of course, Marching Carrot took over from Tim. But, when he had those meetings, Tim would have an agenda. He would take notes, and then he would send them back out to the entire board of what the Facilities Use talked about. So, we'll follow up on the writ of law to see if it's actually an open meeting. There's some questions there about legalities. I think with this three people committed to it, it may not actually be an open meeting. So, there will be some differences in how you specify when those meet. But, we always had them open to the public when I was in Stanley. But, we didn't do like we do here with the regular meeting, post it X number of hours ahead of time, because it's, it made it difficult, because it got confusing with all the different meetings on the website. So, but it was always open to the public.
And we should have more information on that at the next, in the next month's meeting. So, we'll hopefully clear up some possible confusion on that, okay? Any other comments concerning Policy 2230 Board Committees and possible changes for that? Hearing none, we'll go on to the next. Dr. Shayla Savage, Policy 1510, 427270, School Safety.
Good evening. Dr. Knight, Board of Education, Dr. James. So, the first policy is for school safety. This is the first reading of this policy as well. Last week, Mr. Sloan, you asked me how many threats we had last school year. So, last school year, for the crisis assessments, we completed a total of 258. This year, we've completed a total of two, excuse me, of 179. So, that's the, I wanted to make sure I got that number to you. But, questions on the policy?
So, questions, anyone recognize for questions for Dr. Savage? Okay, seeing none, well, this is first reading. We'll bring it back at the next meeting, okay? Dr. Savage, you also have Policy 4110, Immunization Health Requirements for School Admission.
Same with this one. This one is a first reading as well. I presented it last week. Wanted to make sure there are no further questions on this policy.
Anyone who want to be recognized to discuss with Dr. Savage, Immunization Health Requirements for School Admission?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
And the waiver or some type of exemption is still applicable to this new immunization requirement?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I assume you're finished, is that correct?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, any other questions? Okay. Dr. Savage, hearing none. This is a first reading. We'll see you again next month on this.
Thank you.
Okay. So, Ms. Kelly Cooper, Mr. Tim Woody, Ms. Kelly Cooper may not, is she not here today?
Tim Woody, sir.
Okay, so, Mr. Tim Woody, you're going to pull a double duty. Graduate, Policy 3460, Graduation Requirement.
Yes, and this is a voting item, and calling back to last meeting, this is bringing us our policies up to date with the legislation of changing to 22 credit minimum now for graduation at the state.
So, we had some discussion on this at the Committee of the Whole meeting. Does anyone want to be recognized to have any questions or comments for Mr. Woody on Policy 3460 Changes?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Does this apply to some of the work that the Portrait of the Graduate did? Is that in some of this?
Not really. I think that in light of me getting on a soapbox, I'll be careful. The 22 credits was a way for the legislation to take away the board's right to say that we can put the six credits on top that we had been doing in the previous time. So, now, we can encourage students to stay beyond 22 credits. But, after 22 credits, a student can, if they've met the graduation requirements, and there's 18 of those plus four electives, if they meet that pathway, then they are eligible to graduate. And typically, it can be at the end of their junior year, based on where they are. And it applies when it came in. There are lots of things that went in to the bill, but when it came out on the other side, there were very few restrictions to that. And so, as of this school year, when it came into effect, any student that meets that criteria can graduate.
So, counselors around, are they still working to encourage to continue to stay in school? To get those extracurricular things and direct them toward CTE programs to help them further obtain a certificate?
Yes, that's our concern, and that's been our big push. We by law have to notify, and it's in our registration guide at the very beginning. But, we do encourage our students to take advantage. We have so many things going on in the elective world in our state's schools, not just CTE, but in fine arts, athletics, and different things that keep kids in school, prams, and those things. So, we're hoping that we can hang on to a lot, but it is going to be an option that kids can take advantage of if they so choose.
Do you have some sort of projection as to how many students may take advantage of this early graduation?
It's kind of hard to say. We have a spreadsheet out there now. Can bring this to you in May, that figure back, requesting the number that have had that for this year and proposing it for next year, to gather those numbers. You know, I anticipate it may be around, you know, 75 to 100 kids. It just depends. We do have a lot of good discussions with our kids. I've had lots of conversations with our school guidance counselors about that, who are concerned about the messaging. And I think they've done a very good job at talking to students about the why behind wanting to stay and encourage those last six credits to get through their typical senior year, because of all the things that are on the table, including free college courses with CCP and different things that they can't take advantage of if they leave early.
Thank you, Mr. Woody.
Any other questions? I have one, because to me, you opened up a Pandora's Box a little bit. And I think this may open up a little bit of a Pandora's Box.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 and I appreciate your honesty here and being forthright. It appears it's lower standards, from my perspective. I may be wrong, but just from my perspective and being a former high school teacher. And give me the sales pitch, give the board the sales pitch that you would give a student who says, "I got 22 hours. I'm out of here." This is, what, what, what is our sales pitch that we have? Because we do know, the more education you have, the better you get at something. Even if you're going into a blue collar job that make very good money, that taking a bit, doing bare minimum doesn't get maximum success. And give me that sales pitch that you would give a student that just won't bare minimum and out, and could do so much more if they did, if they did more, more from that, than that bare minimum.
Well, I think that is a hard one to give in elevator speech, just for one, because I think that's a conversation you have to have with each individual student. And you have to know your kids in your building, if you're the counseling team, your principals, your administrators, to sit down and have a reason, a question for why. I would start with, what's your why behind wanting to leave early? Because a lot of times, students don't have a connection that keeps them really, truly focused in high school. And if, that's why, again, it's so important to get to know our students in ninth grade. And as they get into, as I said last time, it's, they're 72% more likely to graduate high school if they pass the first four classes in high school. Relationships mean a lot, but I think sitting down and asking the why and having conversations about what they want to do after high school, what's the why? And then piecing together what that puzzle would look like for them to stay in high school. If it's trades, get them connected at CATS. If it's something they want to go off to college, but they don't know how, talk about the FASFA. Talk about the opportunities of money that's there for them to go. A lot of folks, I know that I was one of those growing up, that didn't ask about financial aid when I was in high school, went a little bit later to college. I think we have so many of our students who want to go, but don't know the questions to ask. So, I think it's that one-on-one relationship and just asking with the why, and let them open the door. And then you have conversations that are poignant to what the student needs are, and then focus on those and build a plan of success for that student. I will say that we've had, in conversations I've had with counselors and students who are doing 22 credits, it's not just our students who are 22 credits and I won't out. It's some of our high-flying kids who say, "I've got 22 credits. I want to go out and do this," you know, or do this. And so, those are different conversations in having. So, we are, I think we have a great team of high school counselors. Dr. Savage does a great job leading that group. And I plug in and out, helping, you know, with the high school things. So, I think they're prepared for it, and they're working toward it one kid at a time. But, it's going to take a village to keep our kids in with the 22 credits, I believe, as we have those positive conversations and we keep doing more things like advancing CATS. And I appreciate the board's trust in building the things that we're building here at CATS with CTE, but also supporting the things we do at our other high schools, where programs are just as successful and the things that we do to build and grow those kids and get them here to CATS to be successful in trades.
And then, of course, athletics would help them to get the four years of eligibility. And there's so many things, and it, it's a little worrisome, just to be honest, from my perspective as a, as an educator, that we can graduate like that. I understand, I understand the reasoning at the state level, but I talk about can of worms a lot, and I'm afraid we're opening up one a little bit with this. Thank you. I did put you on the spot a little bit. My apologies. But, I completely agree with what you said. You got to individualize it. What Keely Ward is doing with the clubs, that's, you got to connect with the students somehow, some way. What CAT, what ATC is doing, what the automotive trades are doing, you know, the manicurists do here. You got to connect.
Exactly, and I'll be back in May to present our local plan for CTE for next year. But, for just the small part that we're doing in CTE, the build of that program and the partnership with Alder Ready, with Mitchell Community College, starting our kids in grade five, and building those engaging things that we do to get those kids that hook to stay in school. It's so important that we do that early and continue that and always reignite that passion and put in and plug new things. That's why we really try to stay ahead of the cutting-edge things and add those to keep our kids ready. And I invite you all out Thursday to Careers on Wheels at the Fairgrounds. It's going to be a fun day.
That it becomes an expectation, not just, maybe I will and maybe I won't. It's the expectation that that will happen.
Exactly.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments for Mr. Woody on Policy 3460 Graduation Requirement?
Um, yes.
One more time, let me make sure that everybody else is good. Anyone else? Okay, go ahead.
Um, does this also include the, the career development plans as well?
That is how it ties into 3420.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm going to talk about that in just a second.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, hearing nothing else, Mr. Woody, we'll go on to Policy 3420, Student Promotion and Accountability.
Yes, and this ties in again with 3460 with the graduation requirements, with also the addition of promotion around the career development plans. That also was a legislative movement by the state that was enacted for this year for all eighth graders. And the eighth graders this year are all required by the state to complete a career development plan, have it on file. And parents have to be notified of how to access it, and those students must complete that plan by the end of the eighth grader. They do not get promoted. So, we're working, we have an attestation plan in place, and we've got our middle school team working very hard in each of the schools. And I think at last check, we were less than 100 kids in the district out of the 1,600 eighth graders that we have, that we have to get one created for them between now and the end of the school year. So, I feel good about that part. And then, those same eighth graders, as they become 10th graders, they also have to revisit that plan and review that plan as a 10th grader, or they don't get promoted to the 11th grade. So, we have an attestation process for that when they get to the 10th grade. But, our goal in CTE is to visit that plan eighth grade, ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade. Because of what Dr. Knight said, it's about focusing on the why and understanding that it's an expectation to continue and do well and to get involved to where the kids want to be here as long as they can take advantage of what we have to offer and what benefits them, and we have to always be a value add to our students.
Okay, I have nothing else. Anyone?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Do you feel that eighth grade is soon enough? Some people feel that taking care of those things and starting to put down something earlier so that they can take advantage to the prerequisites that are required for CTE.
Major Clarity, you're going to talk about that, I'm sure.
Yes, yeah, I was about to. Well, with Major Clarity, which is our Career in College Promise, or Career in College Ready, and sorry, program, where we track all things from grade five through grade 12. And one of the big pieces of that is skills like interest inventory for the fifth grade. And that's where we start with fifth and sixth grade, is building that interest and just getting them hooked into learning to know more and more about it. And then, as they get into the seventh grade, we have had our kids building those CDPs in the sixth grade. We've been doing that for the last four years now. So, before the state made it a mandate, we were already doing it. Because we know the value in kids thinking about, what am I going to do when I graduate high school? And it's like an Etch A Sketch. They can shake it and start over and do again. But, it's a plan on paper that they can go and mold and shape, as they mold and shape from grade to grade. So, that when they get to 11th grade, my goal is, eighth grader here, 11th grader here. And when, as they're going from 10th grade to 11th grade to register, then they can declare their E. As I've talked about before, are they going to be enrolled, employed, enlisted, to be an entrepreneur when they graduate high school? If we know that going into the last two years, we can be a value add as a district to help those students, guide them to where they need to be to be the most successful for post-secondary success.
Thank you.
Any other question, Mr. Woody? Go ahead.
Mr. Woody, would it be possible for you to provide us with a couple of examples of what this career development plan looks like, just so we can have a better appreciation? For maybe a couple of different types, maybe, or examples? Obviously, not with a student's name in it, but one that's realistic, so we can have a better understanding.
Yes, I'll make that a part of my presentation in May for the local plan.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Seeing none, Mr. Woody, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And so, next we'll go on to the approval of budget reductions. We had a very good presentation. I mean, I've liked what I heard all the time, but very good presentation, but, I'm sorry. Do I have something?
I'm just making sure to clarify.
Go ahead.
Is that a voting item?
Um, this is still first, first reading.
Okay, good.
My apologies.
No, no, I see it now, first read.
It's still first reading. I was on assumption, my bad.
Good, I just wanted to talk.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Angel. So, next we have the approval of the budget reductions. Dr. Billy Berry, Dr. LeVar Mizell, and Mr. Adam Steele. As I said, the budget reductions you don't like, but it is the reality of the budget that's projected that we'll have. And we had a very good presentation, I thought, on it last time. Well done there, and so, do you have anything new to give, or?
Um, no, sir. We had the presentation last week. Dr. Mizell, Mr. Steele, and I would be glad to answer any questions.
So, does anyone want to be recognized? This is a voting item. And does anyone have any questions regarding the budget reductions discussion there? We did get a one-pager from Dr. Berry today, so, Mr. Sloan.
All right. We're supposed to be all about the kids. In your opinion, is this going to hurt our kids at all, taking this money away? Or are we doing away with stuff that's going to set our kids back?
Well, I mean, certainly, anytime you have to make reductions to the budget, there's a cost involved in that, regardless of what that is. You know, it's, just as an example, the Virtual Academy is an opportunity for students. Now, we're still going to be able to provide some virtual opportunities for students, but not the Virtual Academy as it stands today. Supply allotments, we're cutting, I think, from 80 to 70 dollars per ADM. So, that's less instructional supplies. I mean, the reality is, anytime you have to make reductions to the budget, there is going to be some sort of opportunity cost or something that you're giving up to balance a budget.
All of the question, do we have any choice in this?
Well, we do have to balance the budget. We don't get to raise taxes, and we don't have, we're, and to be clear, this is all based on the projected revenue streams that we have. We don't know what the legislature is going to do with teacher raises. We're basing it on what the projections are today. We're basing it on the CPI growth from the county. So, you know, there's a chance that the raises could come back more, which would make some of those teacher taxes, I think is what Mr. Kupick referred to it as last week. Would make all those amounts of money go up, or those things could be less. As it stands today, based on the projections...
As it stands today, based on the projections we have, we do have to make the reductions that we discussed.
Mr. Sloan, you're good? Okay.
You guys have everything.
Anyone else, any questions for the three?
I have some for Adam.
Okay, go ahead.
So, of course, you know, everything we do is put out on Facebook, so Facebook posse determines how, you know, we do our job or not. I do like what Gene Haupt said as a commissioner, before you criticize our actions, know what our options are. So, when you're limited with options, you make the best judgment call you can as a human being. So, a couple of things that we're posting out there. So, Adam, by state law, how many positions are required at central office? State law.
So, state law dictates the, there's two required positions, central office, you have to have a superintendent, and you have to have a CFO.
So, with that said, who pays those salaries? The majority of those salaries?
So, the state pays, they give us an allotment of about $1.2 million for central office. And so, we, I'm making sure I got my numbers, because 1.2 million, and we're able to pay central office salaries dictated by the state, because it tells us a range, and we are able to pay those salaries there.
So, you've actually were an auditor for many, many years, audited major companies across North Carolina, I'm sure outside. Current president of SASBO, which is the South Carolina Association of Business League.
Southeastern.
Do what, southeast?
Southeastern.
Oh, the whole southeast.
Both states.
Oh, you just got a promotion. No, but, so you do the whole southeast. So you've seen it, been there, understand operation. So, we're 2,700 employees, $330 million budget. Can you run that without a leader, without an HR director, without accounting and a plethora of staff? I'd like for us to get in car and go to Lowe's Corporate, let's see how many people are there. They have 3,200 employees. Then let's see the difference. So, people need to understand, our money, we have no way to earn money, collect money, well, maybe tech fees, I hear about that a lot, too. But we're in the, you know, when our budgets are cut from the state or local, it's people, 92% of our budget's people. We're going to be the first ones to cut everything possible for a position. Central office, since I arrived in 2020, we chose not to replace a assistant superintendent at that time, and several other positions. So you guys got the numbers Friday. So with these proposed cuts, central office is going to be over $2 million in reductions. There's nowhere else to reduce. We have to have human beings to process payroll. HR with 2,700 employees, I can assure you, there's problems every single day. And so, or we can reduce HR, and then we have the lawsuits we have to contend with, which comes out of local money. So that's even more teachers to lay off. So, one thing about this district I'll brag on is, we have very few litigation suits for somebody as big as we are. And our attorney firm has told us that several times. So, we're very cognizant of making sure we don't get sued, because that money comes directly out of local budget. So we don't want to waste money on frivolous lawsuits, so we dot our i's, cross our t's. But, and then John Ribick, we used to have a Title I director that we paid just to do Title I programs, but we gave that to John Ribick in addition to his duties. That saved us almost $100,000 in salary and benefits. And he's responsible for over $7 million that he has to put a plan in for. So, it's not that you just check a box and you get the money. Our Title I plan with the other programs is about 100 pages, and you won't get approved by just cutting and pasting every year. They read the plans and look at student data and go, well, if this didn't work last year, why do you want to fund it again this year? So those programs can be cut also. So, and we're the most audited entity there exists in government. There are auditors every single week auditing programs and auditing our budget. I think if the federal government would have done that, we wouldn't be $38 trillion in debt. But that's just my opinion. So, that said, I just wanted to clarify some things out in the public. Again, our salaries at central office, just like principals are paid by the state, I will tell you, there's a lot of unfunded mandates at the state. Example, assistant principals. Dr. Berry, I think it's nine, every 98 students we get a month of employment. So think about that, folks. If you can go to our high schools and operate with one principal and one AP or two APs, I'd like to see you try. There's no way. You're dealing with thousands of students. It requires supervision. So, the sad part of it is, in our state, it's always about what can we can cut out of education. It's not what can we invest in education? And we definitely don't want to be here saying, we went through this trying to say, what can we possibly get rid of that impacts the classroom the absolute least amount?
So, Ms. Kern, I think you want to be recognized.
We had some constituents that were concerned about the Virtual Academy. Can you explain some of the alternative options those families will have?
Yes, well, we have the I Academy here at CATS, which is a homeschool partnership for virtual schools. And, you know, that's certainly an option for everyone. Obviously, going back to their homeschool is certainly an option as well. Those are the options that we've discussed thus far. They did all receive a letter that said, we'll spell all that out a little more clearly in the coming week or so. But, yeah, those are two of the options right now.
And you've used the I Academy, or someone in your family?
Yes.
I would just tell parents that there, I understand there's children that need just virtual. There's companies already reaching out to me this morning wanting to partner with us. There are some state laws that make it very difficult to partner with virtual academies. We tried it for what, two years, Billy? We kept presenting to the state, couldn't get an answer, and we were finally told we couldn't do it. K-12 Education wanted to partner with us two years ago, and we never could get an answer and worked on it for two years. But here at CATS, if you're getting behind virtually, then there's an option to bring you in and give you tutor support. You typically don't get that. So, Mr. Rogers would love to have you if you're six through 12, and Andy Mihoff, if you're K-5.
Yes, we, well, our family used that, and it was very well, very well received. They did well. I loved having this support here. Got behind, we can bring them up for tutoring, where the I Academy, you might not necessarily have that ability. So, I think you get, and you get to be part of the trade programs here at CATS as well. It also has the benefit of still being able to play sports at your local school as well. So, I would suggest those families look into that thing. And also, I'd like to say, if anyone wants to donate to our shortfall, you can always bring us a check.
Point of information.
Yes, yes, sir.
It seems like we're always fussing at our county commissioners needing money, but that's not the main place that we need to get money from. Could you explain?
Well, the state, so, the truth of the matter in Irold County, the wealth is I-40 and below. Now, if I hurt anybody's feelings above I-40, there is some scattered wealth above I-40, but the majority of our county wealth is below I-40. So what happened to us several years back, we had a four-tier system in North Carolina. Tier four were your Big Five, your Wake County, your Charlotte May, that really could pull in wealth. We, someone decided in their infinite knowledge to collapse that to three tiers, then that threw us in tier three. At that point, we lost two different buckets, low wealth funding, we lost several buckets of money that we could not tap into. And of course, the wealth in Irold County has pushed us out of being able to tap into low wealth. As a matter of fact, that's, as we talked the other day, it's even been cut. So even the counties that get some supplemental services or money are being cut. But we're out of 100 counties, we're like 96th to 99th. It teeters back and forth, but we're at the very bottom. And, you know, I've had several conversations at the state. Their take on the matter is, we're a wealthy county, we can afford to do more. So hence, we don't get as much state funding. So our student, if we got the state funding, the average state funding, we wouldn't be talking about budget tonight. We wouldn't be talking about low-performing schools, because we'd actually have revenue that we could tutor and do a lot of other things. But we're not at the average. We're at the very bottom. And so, we fight. We're, again, if you look at the average, and I've gave it to you on some numbers in the last few months, but we're about $1,500, $1,600 below the average state funding. That is a substantial amount of money with 22,000 or 21,000 students.
I think it's also worth mentioning, just to add on to that, you know, we, $3 million or 2.9 sounds like a lot of money for a budget shortfall, and it is a lot of money to, you know, any of us. However, if you look throughout the state right now, there are a lot of districts that have a much more drastic shortfall. I think we did a pretty good job last year preparing with the end of our ESRS funding, because last year we ended up cutting about $4.5 million out of the budget. So, that made this a little easier to absorb than the, you know, 11 or 16 million that some of the other districts are having. Still not a situation you want to be in, you know, these are all difficult conversations to have. But I do think we've done about as well as we can planning to get up to this point.
Ms. Kern, you're finished? Okay. Mr. Kubenek, go ahead.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your efforts in putting these reduction plans together. And as you mentioned, Dr. Berry, it wasn't just this year, it was last year. And having been involved in slash-and-burn cost-reduction programs in the corporate world, this is not what's happening here. So I wanted to make sure everyone understood that. And it's very distressing what we have in front of us. And then finally, the thing that really hurts me the most are the handful of people affected through the daycare program. And the numbers of people are not that great, but the impact to these folks are huge. And I wish we could do something, I wish we could do something for not only folks in the community, but even our own employees who use this program that may now have to make some difficult decisions. So, I wish we could do something, but I wanted to just state that you have put a lot of thought and methodology into what I've seen that you've presented to us, and I appreciate those efforts.
Anyone else for, I have a couple of questions. Mr. Steele, we've been, we're taking money off fund balance.
That's great. Taking money off fund balance for, well, this will be the third year.
Yeah, I, you know, when I first came on the board, there was a discussion of some people, you would hear some people say, well, we got too much money in fund balance. Maybe we shouldn't have it there in fund balance. And now, it's like, I'm kind of glad we had money in fund balance. But I think we're starting to drain our fund balance. You want to comment on the amount we have in fund balance and projecting forward one to two years?
Yeah, currently, we have just a little bit over $9 million in fund balance. After this year, you'll be down to about $7.5 million. If you'll remember, a few, two years ago, we were, we had about $12 million, and the board at that time chose to move $4 million to capital, which did hurt our ability to operate with operations.
But I think that, at the time, it was, there was the feeling, I think at that time, that board decides, thought that the capital projects had been put off for so long and promises made, it finally need to be promises kept for those places where the capital expenditures were made at. So, do you foresee, I guess, I know it's hard to have a crystal ball, but are we going to have to keep pulling money out of our fund balance? What are your thoughts?
Going forward?
Going forward, going forward after this. I mean, I would love for our next budget to not pull any out of fund balance. The issue is, of course, what do we possibly cut if we don't get an increase in funding?
Right. That's million-dollar question, but I do think if we stay on CPI index, I think Dr. James is mentioning, I know Dr. Berry as well, if we stay on CPI index, it's going to be tough. 3% is not covering cost of raises, cost of benefits, unfortunately.
So CPI index, sooner or later, we're going to run out of fund balance?
Yeah.
Yes, because if you keep using CPI, it's below the cost of living, eventually, your, our percentage of the local budget goes down each year. Eventually, it'll be zero.
So, we, I just want to make sure we're looking forward as well. I know you are, and we've got to, we've got to fight the fire that's right in front of us, not the one that's coming down the road. But we need to have some vision on it, and I'm glad that you do. And I, I guess I would, I would go on about the, Mr. Kubenek talking about daycare, I really like the daycare idea, but we're just not making any money off of it. Wish we could find some partners, but we haven't. The teacher thing bothers me a lot. I think Ms. Kern made a comment earlier about the teachers wishing that, but it is what it is. I was, and when I was teaching, I taught a year at Freedom High School, and I was in a reduction of force. I was there. And so, I understand it happens, and it's not the first time. So, we will get by. Teachers are flexible, they're resilient. And it's one of the things I think I learned as a teacher, doing the most you can with as little money as you had. And we're going to work hard. We're going to work hard at it. This is a voting item. Any more discussion? So, do I have a motion to accept the budget reductions per the discussion of, from Dr. Berry, Dr. Mazel, and Mr. Adam Steele?
So moved.
So, we have a motion to approve the budget reductions per the discussion earlier. Do I have a second?
All second.
We have a second from Ms. Kern. Any discussion per the motion to accept the, approve the budget reductions? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the budget reductions per the discussion previous, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Six-zero. Oops, my apologies. Last on the agenda, we added legislative committee update. That is going to be Mr. Rhonda Hoag and Mr. Kevin Angel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, colleagues on the board. We had really set out this past month to continue our efforts to meet with various government groups. And this past month, that included the town of Troutman. So Mr. Schenkirk, myself, and Mr. Hoag met with Mr. Young, the mayor of Troutman, as well as with Mr. Wyatt, the town manager, just to set some ground, do some groundwork around our working relationship as it relates to these, particularly these two schools that we have, that we're building on. You know, kind of broad level, I would say, it was a productive conversation, we received good feedback, and there is a commitment to meet consistently on a monthly basis was what was requested. We did discuss, you know, the hot topics are, you know, our relationship around utility use and partnering with the town of Troutman to provide that at these various locations. And those conversations are going to be ongoing, is what I would say. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Hoag and have him speak a few more details about that meeting before we kind of wrap up.
We, we spoke with the, with them about the water sewer. Like Mr. Angel said, the, we're looking at options for the Parker Town Elementary, because we're spending tax dollars that we've got to look at the different options as far as a water sewer. And Troutman has the possibility of providing for that school versus a septic well system or a filtration system on-site. But right now, we're still, we're still in the talks, we don't have any definite, definite set yet. We did talk about, you know, the different projects they had going, plus our school projects, which are all in proximity to the town of Troutman. And it was a, it was a good meeting, it was, everything was positive. And at the end of the meeting, the mayor, T. Ross, he said, looked at us, and he said, that is probably the most positive meeting with Irold Stateful Schools that he had ever attended. So, we look forward to meeting with them again, and we also have more meetings coming back with Irold County. They want to meet on a, on a bi-monthly schedule, too.
Yeah. So our next step will be to connect with the folks at the City of Statesville as well. Kind of got different reasons. I want to thank Mr. Schenkirk publicly for his professionalism. There's a lot of intellectual capital in the room when he's there. I hope he takes that compliment sincerely. I appreciate his subject matter expertise and all these conversations around our shared partnership with these agencies, or these government agencies. I think, just to be real kind of vulnerable about it, I think there's repair work that's being done. I think there's a short, there's short-term goals, and there's long-term goals. In my mind, it's very much on those long-term goals, as we kind of set ourselves as a current board in a better position to work with our colleagues who are elected officials here locally. I did want to mention, there are a lot of bills that have been introduced at the state level, there's some in committee. It is, it's overwhelming, the amount that could potentially impact public education. I have been reading and combing through that, I assume probably everyone is. I think before we come to a place where we say, "Hey, let's, let's cosign on A, B, or C," we just need to see where things go over the next month or so. So with that, we will get a written report to the chairman, who can share with the rest of the board for this past month, and you have the first report from the previous month, and we'll kind of continue to go from there.
Thank you very much. I do think crossover day is, what, in about a week or so at the state level in Raleigh? If you don't know what crossover day is, that's when the bills get introduced in the House, get sent to the Senate, bills get introduced to the Senate, get sent to the House, and of course, you have the House and the Senate both to agree to a bill, of course, before it has a, has a chance to become law and get signed by the governor in our separation of powers system. If it doesn't make it through crossover day, it doesn't become a bill, it doesn't become a law. And remember the old, you know, Schoolhouse Rock, you know, "I'm a bill, I'm only a bill." Well, bills have to go across, do the crossover. If they make it through, if they don't make it through crossover, they have no chance of becoming law. So I think, like you said, wait till, see, after crossover, see how things go that way. And that, then we'll have a better idea of what's possibly coming down the pipe and seeing what we want to try to sign on to and possibly not sign on to. Any comments, questions from other board members for the legislative committee? Okay. That's, so hearing none, we'll go to public comment. We have currently six signed up for public comment. And let me go to, yes, okay. So, "Public comment period is a time for members of public to share their viewpoints with the board. All speakers will state if they are residents of Aridale County and if they are parent or guardian of a student in school system. The board does not respond to individuals addressed to board except to provide or request clarifications. If there are a large number of speakers, the board may require the designation of a spokesperson for each group of persons supporting or opposing the same position. Complaints involving individual personnel or student manners are generally confidential, confidential, and are not appropriate for the public comment session and should be reported to the superintendent. So if you have those, I would ask that you handle those with the superintendent and not do it publicly. Disruptions by any person or person at a public meeting was subject to actions according to General Statute fourteen, one-four-three dash three-one-eight point one-seven." And concerning public comment, our policy says, and I'm reading this directly from Policy twenty-three E.T.M., Public Participation at School Board Meet, at Board Meetings, it says, "The board permits public comments on issues relevant to and within the jurisdiction of the school district. No person may use the public comment portion of the board meeting to actively campaign for or endorse a specific candidate running for any public office. Persons are not limited from, from speaking on issues relevant to the official business of the system, so they can speak about that. Purpose of the policy: Active campaigning includes but not limited to asking for support a candidate running for public office, stating what a candidate will do if elected. Nothing in this section shall be construed to prohibit a person speaking in your public comments identifying themselves. You can identify yourself but not start campaigning." So basically, the gist of this is, it needs to be relevant to and within the jurisdiction of the school district. And so if you start kind of getting off that highway a little bit, I'll hopefully guide you back gently into that direction. So we're going to start off, we have Ms. Paula Memna, and you have the four, three minutes. And so, Jadak, if you can pull those up, and Ms. Paula, you'll be able to speak. Okay, just give it a minute till your time comes up. Are we ready? Here we go, here we go. Go ahead.
My name is Paula Memna. I live in Aridale County. I have no children in this particular school system. I have some questions about the reaction to this statute from the North Carolina Board of Education. It's a list of directives for superintendents of counties which have low-performing schools. Were low-performing schools identified with directed actions, including a proposed plan submission to the local school board? Was there a letter of communication sent to parents of children with, in low-performing schools? Was this done within thirty days of receipt of the information? After that, was there a preliminary plan submitted to the school board that was made public with a notice for parents to make suggestions if they desired? I have just not seen these items. If you have them, may I have a copy of the parent letter and the preliminary plan? If that was completed, was the plan approved by the school board? If that was done, may I have a copy of any suggestions made by the school board? The final plan should have been approved by the school board, actually, by December the second, two thousand and twenty-four. Now, the North Carolina reading and math proficiency from the North Carolina Report Card, reading grades three through eight, reading proficiency was at sixty percent in two thousand and nineteen, but went down to forty-nine point six percent in two thousand and twenty-four. In two thousand and nineteen, for grades three through eight, math proficiency was sixty-two percent, but in two thousand and twenty-four, proficiency was fifty-six point two percent. Much higher proficiency is absolutely needed in both reading and math. Now, thirteen out of thirty-seven schools in ISS are low-performing. Eleven schools have been low-performing for at least two years, which means they qualify for assistance. Four schools have been low-performing for the past eight to ten years. It's way past time to correct this. Seven low-performing schools have a higher percentage of economically disadvantaged students, but seven low-performing schools have a lower percentage of economically disadvantaged kids. Conclusion: Poor performance can't be blamed solely on disadvantaged status or poverty. Okay, ISS chronic absenteeism is at twenty-three point four percent, but some low-performing ISS schools have as high as fifty percent chronic absenteeism. This is a big factor. Chronic absenteeism definition is that a child must be absent for at least ten percent of the total number of school days. The North Carolina average of economically disadvantaged is fifty point seven percent, which I find to be kind of high. Does this indicate a strong correlation between school absence and poverty? How can absenteeism be reversed and performance increased? Number one, don't blame the teachers and the principals, and then set up a weekly rewards program for attendance. Decide on a reward. Make participation in sports dependent upon good attendance in school. Assign more certified teachers to low-performing schools.
Ms. Paula, your, Ms. Paula, your time is, your time is up, ma'am. Your time is up, your three minutes is up, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Virgil Outland. I think I said that right. Is Virgil here? Okay. Next, I have Menelaus Outland. I assume they have left, okay? Is it Marvelous? I'm sorry, Marvelous Outland, my apologies.
Marvelous Outland.
I understand that. I have been there. Michelle Kubenik is next.
My name is Michelle Kubenik. I'm a resident of this county, but do not have any school-aged children in the district. Dr. James, during the February tenth school board meeting, you said if you really cared as a community about closing the gap, it's called pre-K. We know that Black and Hispanic children, as well as children from economically disadvantaged families, have lower scores in math and reading at school entry compared to white students and students from families with higher incomes. The implication leads me to ask, what can be done? What do you suggest we do as a community to get more children enrolled in pre-K programs, given that education is the major opportunity for a child's upward mobility? In Building Parent Capacity in High Poverty Schools by Tiffany C. Anderson, which I highly recommend reading, she mentions three factors that affect whether parents are motivated to become engaged in their children's education. Number one, do they understand school expectations and what school is asking of them? Two, how confident do parents feel about their ability to help their children? And three, whether they feel invited, both by their children and the school? As for the advisory meetings held with staff, student, and parent representatives, I'm wondering if parent engagement and, I'm sorry, I'm wondering if parent engagement and the need to get more children enrolled in pre-K have been addressed. Perhaps the following questions could be asked. How do we get more books into the hands of our preschoolers? How do we engage our low SES preschool-aged children in more enriching activities with their parents? Does our district refer parents to any programs that teach early literacy, numeracy, and positive discipline skills, as well as how to be strong advocates for their children? Teachers complain about the lack of value some parents place on their children's education. So how do we increase parents' expectations for their children's educational attainment? As a retired school counselor, I know that a parent's personal school experience can be an obstacle to involvement. So can financial and time constraints, as well as cultural and linguistic barriers. How might these parent representatives respond to these needs? How might they connect with parents of preschoolers and encourage them to enroll their children in pre-K and get them involved in their children's education?
Ma'am, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I only had one more sentence, so that was pretty good. Thank you.
All right. Next, we have, and I hope I get this right, Nithin Surindran. My apologies if I did not get the name right.
You got it right, all right.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board, Chairman Knight, Dr. James, and community members. My name is Nithin Surindran, and I'm a parent of a student at the Aridale Statesville Virtual Academy. I'm here tonight to respectfully ask you to reconsider the recommendation to close the Virtual Academy at the end of the school year. While I understand the financial pressures of, that our district is facing, I want to emphasize that this school is just not another program, it's a lifeline for students with unique and serious challenges. My child and others like them face circumstances that make traditional in-person school and in-person learning extremely difficult, whether it's due to severe food allergies, like our daughters, or mental health challenges like anxiety. For these students, the Virtual Academy is not a preference, it's a necessity. One of the most critical components of this school's success is its commitment to synchronous learning, real-time instruction that connects students directly with teachers and peers. This is not passive or isolated online work, it's interactive and very deeply engaging. The teachers in the Virtual Academy have gone above and beyond, not just delivering content, but building relationships, fostering curiosity, and supporting students both emotionally and academically. Their dedication has made all the difference. This school has given the kids a complete and an enriching educational experience, live instruction, challenging assignments, opportunities to participate in events like the Spelling Bee, Math Fair, the North Carolina Science and Engineering Fair, and brought in a sense of community. In fact, our daughter won the state-level North Carolina Science Fair, I'm sorry, last year. I'm sorry, and received an exemplary award at this, I'm sorry, at the state level this year. These types of opportunities to learn, shine, and belong would not have been possible through other learning avenues. The Virtual Academy allowed her to grow academically and emotionally in a space where she felt safe and supported. There are thirty-eight schools in our district. Thirty-seven of them are built for students who thrive in a traditional setting. This one, the Virtual Academy, is the only one designed for students who need something different to succeed. While it may serve a very small population, its impact on these students is immeasurable. Removing it takes away the only option that some of these students have, and that is truly heartbreaking.
Your time is up, sir.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, no, it's fine.
Thank you so much for your.
Thank you, thank you for your comments.
Dr. Knight.
Yes, sir.
I would ask him if he would see Mr. Rogers before he leaves tonight. We have about three different iterations of this program. There's ways to accomplish what they were getting and still do what we need to budget-wise.
So per the superintendency, Mr. Rogers, Mr. Surindran, thank you. Last on the list is Jean Foster.
Chair, Dr. Knight, members of the board, Dr. James, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Jean Foster. I'm a resident of Aridale County with two children in the system. I'd like to address two items from the recent COW meeting and tonight's agenda. First, I want to commend, commend Ms. Henson and the AIG team for the thoughtful updates to the local AIG plan. I've worked with her team and know how complex that process can be. The proposed changes reflect meaningful input from the stakeholders. I especially appreciate the inclusion of cognitive and mental enhancements in that plan. As Ms. Henson noted at the COW meeting, many gifted students also face challenges such as executive functioning issues, and this plan provides crucial support to help them reach their true full potential. Additionally, additionally, I applaud the team's effort to recognize and include giftedness beyond traditional academics. State funding is allocated to support four percent of students in this program, but Ms. Henson's team is currently serving around eleven percent, I believe is the number that she said last week, which is a remarkable achievement. Their enrichment programs for the summer, many of the clubs, and the project, project opportunities are open to all students, broadening the impact even further. As a parent of identified students, I'm grateful for their dedication and vision. Second, I want to thank Dr. Berry, Mr. Steele, and Dr. Mizell for their efforts in addressing the difficult task of reducing the budget by nearly three million dollars. No one, no one wants to cut teachers or their benefits. As Dr. James was referring to during the budget reduction agenda item, that said, I urge the board and our community to consider the broader context. Approximately seven million dollars in public education funds are being diverted this year to private school vouchers in Aridale County. I'm going to say that again, nearly seven million dollars in Aridale County. Additionally, the North Carolina courts have ruled in the Leandro case that public education must be adequately funded, yet our legislators continue to not comply with that. The real issue here isn't about local budget cuts, it's political decisions at the state level. We must hold our elected officials accountable and prioritize public education. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. So that is the last, so we've finished our non-consent agenda, we have now public comment. Dr. James, we have time for some superintendent comments from you.
So, thank you, and I want to thank Ms. Kubenik and the speaker, so they hit on some things, but I will, I will get some data that's, no matter who comes and presents, the data is the data, there's an inverse relationship between proficiency and poverty. So you have to, and Jean just walked up, so you have to think with, it's like circumstantial evidence. You can convict somebody of a crime if you have enough circumstantial evidence. So if you look at what our state's trying to do, we have a formula that makes impoverished schools look bad. Then we take voucher money and hand to people that have a hundred and six thousand dollars plus, and I, I want competition, but when I'm making that kind of money and I want to take my child to a private school, I think I have the wherewithal. I think I've been blessed to have the wherewithal. So if you take our data, like the data for the last twenty-five years that's been done across the nation, poverty and proficiency are inversely correlated. One goes up, the other goes down. So why not use a formula that measures what teachers truly do, growth? So... So, we have a kindergarten assessment, so this shows you where we're at in Iredell, it's no different than the rest of the country. We do a kindergarten assessment the first two weeks of school. So we took our data from our affluent schools and took our data from our impoverished schools, and there's actually reading a two-and-a-half-year gap starting kindergarten. For math, it's three-and-a-half years. So then you have to ask, there is no teacher, I don't care who it is, that's going to teach what they have to that year and close the two-and-a-half-year gap. Cannot be done. So that means you gotta put your kid in tutoring, again, which costs money, and we did have a setback. It's called COVID. Everywhere in the nation went backwards with COVID. We're rapidly catching back up where we were. But I would tell you, every day, none of our principals, I wouldn't sit here and say, "Are we doing perfect?" Absolutely not. We are a continuous improvement district, and we've heard this, low-performing schools, and I've actually talked to the chair, once we fill the seat, I would love for a couple board members to join us, it's a huge team, and I would love for them to participate in all the professional development that these schools are required to do, that is not, again, going to close that gap. To close the gap takes pre-K. So we partner with Partnership of Children, which is here in Iredell County, and Department Health and Human Services was giving North Carolina pre-K many years back, good, bad, indifferent, I don't know. But I run NC pre-K in Montgomery County for five years. The problem is, if you go to MyFutureNC, which I believe, Mike, you and your wife came to Mr. Daggett's presentation, so some of the data there is off the MyFutureNC dashboard, and they look at economic viability of every county, they look at education readiness, and if you look at North Carolina, only 57% of the children that qualify for NC pre-K services are served. So that means 43% of our kids out there aren't getting the services needed, so when they show up at our building, it's a difficult job to try to teach a child that's two-and-a-half years behind when they walk in. And transportation typically is an issue when you get to high poverty, so then you have to think about, how can you bus them in? And, you know, Paula had several questions, and we'll answer those next board meeting, but willing to send her all that. But everything she talked about in the low-performing plan John Rubick presented, the school improvement plan is actually your, those schools that are low-performing have a different school improvement plan, but everything that we do is dictated by the state, and I'm not gonna say that's bad. We constantly are going to letters training, which is a science of reading, and it's actually proved very well. But if you look at Mississippi versus North Carolina, Mississippi had the highest increase in NAEP scores in the nation. So if you go to Mississippi, and we sent people there, and look at what they're doing as a state, it's a lot more than what we've done as a state. So we always want to take something that works, strip it down, get a car, take the tires off of it, and then see if it'll roll. And it doesn't work. So, at some point in our state, we have to have people that truly care about kids. And unfortunately, with all the circumstantial evidence, it looks like we're trying to build a system of the have and have nots. And you can't come to any other conclusion, because we know what will fix the system, and that's offering NC pre-K for our most impoverished students. It will at least help close that gap. And, spot on, if you're not reading on grade level when you leave third grade, only 50% of those students will ever pass an EOG or EOC. So if we don't catch them before the end of third grade, the chances of every catching them as far as reading, so that's why as a nation, we read on a fifth-grade level, because we have people that are functionally illiterate, unfortunately, given the day and time we're in, because we need to put resources where they matter. And it's not like you're gonna give us a military budget and go spend, you know, billions of dollars. We're talking, tonight, we talked, if we had $6 million more dollars, high-dose tutoring, we could do a lot of things in NC pre-K programs. So trying to get the community to understand, investing in our students that are in poverty or impacted by economic disadvantages, it can only help putting them in a good NC pre-K plan. We do have some of those housed in our schools, we get, and so here's the caveat too, we get less money per student if they're housed with us than you do if you're a private center. I can live with that. We do already have the overhead and the cost covered. But the private centers, we do have some of those, but we have seen the data where kids go through NC pre-K, catching up and actually being on grade level, and that's what we want for all of our children, because we're in a global economy, whether we want to believe it or not, and we're competing with India that has over a billion people, their top 10% of students actually is bigger than our entire educated population. So, we are competing globally, and I think it behooves all of us as human beings in America to provide children what they need as early as possible. Then, we won't be talking about, you know, the gaps and low performing based on this formula. There is a billion, one of them, to actually change one of the caveats in the formula to meet growth, which is, we're the only state left that's got, you've got to exceed growth, and if you could exceed growth, you wouldn't be low performing to start with. So, we are working on that, there are several bills out there, we'll see how it flows out this year, but desperately, we need to wrap around services to those schools, and again, it comes down to money. All the federal money we get is put into our Title I schools, and we actually have 22 of our 38 schools that qualify for Title I. We don't have enough money to spread across all those, because you dilute the money, and I mean, you know, $100 is not gonna help a school. So, there's limited money trying to accomplish a monumental task. So, again, and I would be first to tell you, are we perfect? Absolutely not. But I don't think you'd find a better group of educators that goes out of their way to go to professional development, to try to find, how can we close these gaps? And then, we get hit in the face every year with a $2 or $3 million cut. At some point, there's nobody left. So, we somehow have got to get politicians at the state level that recognize, and I understand competition, I understand, you know, faith-based schools, there's a lot of reasons people aren't in public school, but the majority of public, of the public school provides blue-collar workforce, and we're 1.5 million student-strong versus a lot less when it comes to all the other options out there. So, we appreciate our teachers, they work very hard, and we're glad the ones that have stayed with us. The other thing, you know, 55% of our staff is non-traditional teachers, and that's not a good place to be, there is a state, and we're having to go to other countries because nobody wants to work in North Carolina at $41,000. And our county, the recent, if you look at MyFutureNC, the recent number, Iredell County is one of the most wealthiest counties in the state, the average household income is $83,000. Sort of hard to attract teachers at $41,000. It's just not going to happen, folks, let's just use some common sense. You're not going to go into teaching in this county because it's expensive to live in, and we basically are a rich county, and we, and I like what Jean Hopp said also, I'm quoting Jean Hopp tonight, he must be on my mind. So, the other thing, we ought to look at the tier system based on zip code. Then we wouldn't get penalized for the wealth that happens to be in the Moore'sville area, but that takes us out of getting multiple federal grants, additional federal dollars, and additional state dollars, and it's not fair to the other parts of the county that are not affluent. So, it's just a bad system, that needs some tweaking, it's not rocket science. But I do appreciate what everyone's done, great conversation tonight, and again, hopefully as we get the board member placed, we can, the chair and the board can discuss, let's look in an at-risk team, we do have an artificial intelligence team that I know one of our board members serves on, and that's a, that's a pretty large group, and we're trying to flesh out everything that's going on with AI, which is just a moving target. So, definitely looking forward to doing some things to bring awareness to our community, absolutely. So, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. James. Just a quick announcements, of course, Friday is a holiday for all the traditional schools, MB Mills Elementary and the early colleges, and Monday and Tuesday, April 21st and 22nd, are teacher workdays at the traditional schools. And April 21st is intercession day for MB Mills, and MB Mills, of course, has the intercession days all this week, from Monday to Thursday. So, do I have a motion to adjourn from anyone? We have a motion to adjourn from Mr. Angel. Do I have a second? We have a second by Mr. Hope. All those in favor to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Six-zero, we are adjourned.